Okay, call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Let's all say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, glad to see you here. This Zoom worked a little bit better this time, didn't it? Paul, will you do the roll call?
Okay, Councilor Henson.
Doug is here.
Doug is here. Uh, Councilor Rios.
Here.
Councilor Burris.
Here.
Councilor Hopkins.
Here.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Shat.
Here.
Mayor Weber.
I'm here, thank you. Okay, we'll approve the minutes and then we'll talk about adding additional things to our agenda this evening. So you have the council meeting minutes for April 6th, 2020. May I have a motion concerning them?
I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve the minutes from the April 6th, 2020 meeting. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Doug, you are muted throughout this, so I didn't hear your vote. I am assuming that it is positive. Will you give me some sort of a sign?
Bumps up.
Yes, neither.
Thank you. Okay, we need to add one item to our agenda, and it is the consideration of the labor negotiation deliberations. I would appreciate a motion to add that to the agenda.
I will move that we add the police union contract negotiations to tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Yeah, oh, thank you. And I think that we will put that in pending business. Oh, new business would be. So that will be what we consider first. Okay, we have a motion in a second to add that to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And so that is our first consideration this evening. We have had an executive session to go over the changes to the contract, and I think that we are ready for, I think we have had the discussion to clear all of our ideas, and we are ready to make a motion to vote on the contract. I will entertain a motion from someone with the changes also. Addition to whatever.
I will move that we accept the police union contract with subject to adding language to change the hours to the 173.33, and to also add the language that was recommended about the outstanding grievance to be dropped as well.
And also approve the changes that were highlighted in red?
With the changes highlighted, correct.
Does that, does that also include the time card change?
The time card change also needs to be added, or?
The time card change.
Right, and Aaron, I think it was, if you're awaiting that, I can clarify that for the public.
Okay, and you were also, you were insinuating?
That's what I was saying, correct, about the time hours, correct.
Well, I second his motion in all of its various parts.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to clarify it real quick?
Do you feel that it needs any further clarification?
That's up to Paul. I'm game with it if he wants to.
Just to put it on the record, it's basically accepting the contract with a correction on the hourly 173.33 plus that the approval and signature is conditional upon a side letter which will, which will acknowledge the language contained in an email from Terry Wright containing time cards, and it will close out the outstanding grievance that's in place.
Exactly.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Question.
A question is called. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously by the council. Thank you very much. We'll go on then to pending business, and the first item of pending business is the Second Amendment of Employment Agreement between the City of Tillamook and Paul Wintergreen. As per all of the changes in the hiring procedures that we are working through, Paul has agreed to continue and made some changes.
These were the changes that you addressed at the last meeting, and they're just incorporated into a document.
They are the changes that were made at the last meeting, and they are incorporated into a document.
So I have not read the entire thing, but I remember there was talk about the language being that he stayed until, or through needed, but this is not just indefinite, correct?
Well, we're gonna keep him till, you know, 80, 85.
The whole eternity clause got scrapped.
He said the eternity clause was scrapped.
Just making sure.
My understanding?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Rebecca.
My understanding was that this was effective through March of next year, and that was kind of the furthest out it will go.
Uh, yes, what I put in here was that an absolute would be through March 15th, and then if for some reason you don't, anybody on board, I'm going to continue on to, excuse me, to January 15th.
January 15th.
If you don't have anybody on board by then, then I continue to March 15th. It has sort of a two face.
Okay, I will entertain a motion concerning this Second Amendment of Employment Agreement between the city and Paul.
I move that we approve the Second Amendment of Employment Agreement between the City of Tillamook and Paul Wintergreen.
I will second.
Second.
Okay, Brian, second to that. Is there any discussion? Does anyone have any questions concerning this?
Question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that means that it passes unanimously by the council. Next, we have the Port of Tillamook Bay response to the whole court and trail easement.
I attached an email from Michelle Bradley in your packet in which she talked about how she had some conversations with several of the board members, but they were not able to put together a board meeting prior to this week. And so there essentially, it's not a formal response. Michelle is on the screen if you have any questions for her, but in essence, it would be that they're very interested in getting the resolution, the water rate resolution passed because they're due to increase on May 1st, and they would, I assume, expedite the response on the trail easement accordingly.
Okay, Michelle, I don't see you, but on my screen, but I understand that you're there. Is there anything that you would like to add?
No, Paul pretty much said it. I did have some subsequent discussions with my board members, but our last meeting was the 16th. It didn't work out to have a meeting. We meet this Thursday night, so that will be on our agenda to discuss. The general consensus was to land somewhere in that 7,500 range as a net, but how we got there was very different in my conversations. So it'll have to be a full board discussion.
Okay, so until that is resolved, we will still go ahead with our proposed resolution concerning the water rates.
Great, thank you.
Aaron?
Rebecca had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I was just curious. You had mentioned that there were some very creative avenues to that 7,500, and I was wondering if that's anything that you're able to elaborate on.
Oh, I probably could. One of them was, the biggest concern from one of my board members is that we don't set precedence with the Salmonberry Trail established fee. And so to keep that as invoiced at the regular amount, but then do some kind of either put 7,500 into a pool so we could help pay for additional, that then we would contribute back to the city as the city develops additional trails. So that was one of them. And then there's just some other accounting type, type things we could do, either water credit, something like that. But there was some very different ideas.
So you will come back to us with some of those ideas. Aaron?
Correct, correct. Whether we do another small work group maybe after my board meets, we're open.
Aaron?
My concern is just that it doesn't get, I don't want to say it's a bargaining chip, but it was kind of one of the bargaining chips to this, and we're kind of letting it go in good faith, and I don't want that to come back around, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and that's totally understood by my board. We just, the water was definitely our priority just because of the timing, and we had some big decisions to make on, on infrastructure improvements if we were not going to get that.
Correct, and that's why I made the comments and motion that I did before, because I understand that, I just, like I said, I don't want this to circle back around and become a, oh, sorry, you know what I'm saying?
No, no, there's definite forward movement that needs to be made, and I'd love to check it off my list of things to do.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would concur as well, Aaron. I have the same concern. We're kind of giving up a little bit of leverage there, so I have a little bit of concern with that, but we're operating in good faith, so willing to.
Yep, completely understood by us, and that is not our intention, is not to bury it, but to definitely move forward and get it done.
Thank you, Michelle, appreciated.
You bet. Thank you all.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion under legislation for approval of Resolution 1813, which is the resolution that is related to this, amending the five-year water rate schedule for users in the city water system inside and outside the City of Tillamook.
I move approval of Resolution 1813.
Second.
Is there any discussion concerning these motions?
I just wanted to place it on the record that this does not increase rates for anyone. The rate schedules all remain okay. It's just the title has changed and who it is applied to.
Right. This does not increase anybody's water rates at this time. So folks don't have to worry in watching about this when they hear about a five-year water rate schedule. So if there is no further discussion, I will call for the vote. Doug, did you have something you wanted to add or not? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are opposed. John, you are opposed.
I'm sorry, I thought.
Okay, John, are you opposed or are you in favor?
No, I apologize. It's cutting in and out on me. I'm in favor.
So that was a unanimous vote in favor. Okay, next we'll go down to our monthly reports. In our first report is Chief Wright.
He has left.
And he has left the building, and.
I don't feel like it's a concrete work. He's been busy with lots of activity, but I can't highlight any particular aspect.
The police department has been extremely busy. It's safe to report that. Aaron?
I will add that in their busyness, they have been very diligent, and they have caught people that were doing stuff at our shop. They had stole other stuff. They have been doing an outstanding job. That's, I just want to add that. They have been busier than ever, dealing with people face to face, and which is very difficult in their profession right now, but they have been doing an amazing job.
Yeah, it's appreciated.
And for reasons that I won't name, I just agree with what Aaron said very, very much. They've been very helpful to me in the last month also.
Yes, so I want to thank all of our officers for the stellar work that they're doing during this really hard time. You have Tim Leiter's report with a couple of pictures. And one thing I want to highlight that I don't really see highlighted adequately in this report is that in the last week and a half, they have managed to take care of four sinkhole areas within the community that they had had to put on hold through the winter. And so if you'll notice around town, you're not seeing any steel plates because they have gotten in there and they have gotten every one of those fixed. And you'll also notice that there has been additional striping in crosswalks. So they have been working on that in potholes. And new signs, sign poles. They've, they've really been working hard.
What this pandemic has done is altered all of their scheduling, and so rather than working on any particular large projects, they're able to pick up a lot of the smaller ones because they have to fit it into the scheduling changes. And so actually, it's been beneficial in that a lot of those little jobs that have been pushed to the side are actually getting done during this time.
They are. They need commendation for that. Aaron?
Speaking of signs, have we notified ODOT about the one-way sign on Fourth and Pacific?
Right?
Yes.
Can you read it backwards? And upside down?
How those signs on Fourth Street get turned around like that, I'll never know, but that one.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
Yes, that's a tough one. Okay, you have a complete, if you have nothing further for Tim for information that Paul can provide for you, you have Jamie's report. Oh, Aaron?
I did have one more thing. I did notice, and I talked to Tim about it, there have been some heavy machinery driven across some pretty nice pavement by someone in town. I don't know, did he talk to you about that, Paul? Of what to do and how to deal with that?
Did not, so no.
I was going by on 12th Street. They're right by the railroad tracks, the new freshly asphalted, and there are tracks from like a, either a great, some big track machine that has been going across, which I'm pretty sure isn't supposed to happen because it's just tearing up that asphalt bad.
We'll ask them tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, you have a very complete report by Jamie.
Right, this is your financial statement for 75%. Here, so it gives you a good track of where we were at at the end of March. You also have some room tax report where you're beginning to see the impacts of the pandemics. We've got two hotels behind on their income, and we're gonna probably see a pretty precipitous drop in room tax. When we get to budgeting, we'll talk a bit about what that does to us. We obviously are gonna have to pull back on our room tax projections for the year and for next year. That's probably the biggest thing that jumps out. The rest of it, I think, is pretty straightforward and without any red flags precaution. But again, March was just prior to the onset of all the stay-at-home. So probably it gives you a good track record for a normal year, and what's gonna happen over the next two months will be interesting to track as our finances for all. We're lucky to not be a sales tax state.
Very lucky to not be a sales tax state, for sure. Do you have any questions on anything that Jamie presented you with? Okay, my report is, over the last two weeks, I have been to a lot of teleconference calls and Zoom calls all relating to the coronavirus, and I sent you the links. I don't know if any of you were able to chime in on any of those meetings, especially the county meetings, to see what's happening, but there's been emergency management team meetings. There was the county, I'm gonna turn my book around here. The county leadership team. Those meet Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Emergency management is Monday. The League of Oregon Cities is Friday, and then there's several of them in between. Now, we'll have a Zoom meeting tomorrow for EDC, so I just stay at home and do meetings. But what we're beginning to discuss in a lot of those meetings is the procedure for beginning to open up. And that, that the county is creating a committee to discuss how that is going to impact the community and what is going to impact the opening. We still only have six confirmed cases in the county, which is very good. However, we have got some mitigating circumstances that could increase that because we have got about 2,000, almost 2,000 vacation rentals in our county because 44% of our county is owned by people who don't live here. That's our buildable land inventory. And so there's about 7,000 units that can be considered in that. And if it is opened up and all of those people decide to participate in coming down here to get away from it all, it will mean an influx of probably 20,000 to 25,000 people. And that will be a sudden influx, and it has to be determined whether or not our infrastructure can support that at this time, whether our grocery stores can support that, and how it will impact our hospital and our health department because some of the things that are being considered, especially by the governor's plan, is the number of tests that are given and the testing for antibodies, the ability to be able to find out how these people that are impacted are in contact with the public. And then, you know, just the, what we have here. We have a 25 unit, a 25-bed hospital in this county, and that's all we have. And so all of that is being taken into consideration. I have been dealing with the public. I have gotten several emails from several people who are very unhappy that they can't go fishing. But in easing up the regulations for the people who live here, how do you not ease up the regulations for the people that don't live here? So there's a lot of things to be considered. And as you know, government moves very slowly, and so this will also take time. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was I did not, I am having trouble with my city email, and so I was not able to send you a copy of the letter that I have written with help from Debbie and Paul to DEQ concerning the grocery outlet. The, the group that filed an appeal previously and has put grocery outlet in peril is at it again. And so I have submitted a letter, and I have asked the county commissioners to consider that, and they will probably be doing that this week because what this company is doing to grocery outlet and to our community is harassment and is unfair. And so if you, in any of, you know, your spare time, would like to write a letter concerning it, I can get you all of the information also. And that concludes my report.
Mayor?
Yes?
We did get a copy of that letter shared with us earlier today, so we have a chance to, we have the opportunity to see it. Is that work then on a hold right now?
Yes, they, they basically were starting to search the property with weight. They are calling that off until they know whether they even have a project or not. They're, they've been stretched in on this. They're almost two years into the process. He approved them back in 2018, and they're still going through extended appeal approval process. And quite frankly, it has a significant amount of dollars. So they're at the point of figuring out whether they're gonna pull the plug or not.
I, as soon as I can get my, well, maybe I can have Paul send it to you because you have a copy of that letter, correct? Did you get one, Brian?
Yes, I got one. It was an excellent letter. Give them hell.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I agree.
Suzanne?
Yes, Doug?
Okay, so the DEQ has that property zoned as floodland, not floodway, which means that, yes, they can build on. Number two, it's less than 500 feet from Highway 101, so it's sin property. So why can we not? Why can, how can they possibly stop us?
This law firm and this group out of California is bound and determined they are going to stop this. They have tried everything, and the point is that it's been eight years since DEQ has even had to deal with anything of this magnitude with a property and a building. And so they're working their way through it because they don't have a lot of expertise on what they need to do to be able to counteract this.
Okay, DEQ pretty much tell them to buzz off?
Uh, no. No.
How did Robies get away with it?
That is one of the questions that was asked pointedly in the letter that Rob Trust, Dusty Trust wrote concerning this, is how did you allow Robies to do this? How did that get through? And grocery outlet is all of a sudden being stopped because of this.
How did Pastoria get away with it? Double standard.
It is truly discrimination and harassment. That's what it is.
Oh, it's so annoying. Two million.
And, and the interesting thing is that this group out of California that is doing this has been asked for a list of its members, and it will not provide it. So we don't have the idea at this point in time who is even a member of this group. And they have been asked in public by DEQ in that last hearing, and they chose not to reply.
Well, who is giving them any kind of authority to better stop these people building grocery stores?
I'm sorry, I didn't really understand your question.
Who is giving these people any authority to have these people not just build their grocery store?
Well, they're following procedures in appeal through the DEQ.
So the DEQ will tell them to buzz off?
They should, but you know, that's not how the DEQ operates, Doug. But anyway, if any of you are so inclined, I'd appreciate it if you would add your comments and a letter regarding this as to how unfair this is to this community especially. Because you know, in the end, we'll get blamed. Even because people won't understand that this is an outside group from California that is doing this.
I don't understand how they even have standing to do anything.
It's a law firm in Portland that is representing them. A law firm that won a case 10 years ago on this. And so they are riding on that, on that victory to be able to continue this.
It's.
I would think, I would think because of Robys and Pastagers, they do not have a leg to stand on.
Paul had something to add.
Yeah, in response to John is, is they're using, they never actually testified before the city, so they have no rights. So they're working through the wetland procedures and grocery outlet has pretty much complied with everything that the wetland requires. But there is, there is a process, a table process, and these guys are using it to the maximum and even beyond what we guys normally see.
So I'll get through the information if you don't have it. If you don't have that, please let me know and I will make sure you get it.
Thank you.
And, okay, correspondence. You have the information from the Oregon Office of Emergency Management on COVID non, COVID non-health related facts and the USDA World Resource Guide included. And if you have any kind of a question, I think that this document has covered every kind of a question and where you can find the answer for it. I think it's pretty complete. And so, well, does anyone have any comments on that? Okay, we'll go to council concerns. Aaron?
I was just going to bring up the boat launch as well because I have had so many phone calls and text messages that, you know, CDC recommends everyone get out, get fresh air. So I'm stuck with my family. I have a boat. I want to go fishing. I cannot go fishing. And it has just been constant. I get, I probably get four or five calls a day about this. And when we are going to try to help push the county to change it, which we can't do, but I just want everybody to know that is a big thing in Tillman County right now.
And it has, and it has caused problems all over the county. There are people all over and they're, you know, the folks from Washington want to come in here also and clam here and crab here because of their licenses and they're very upset that they also cannot.
Oh, yeah. And to tack on to your talk about vacation homes and how many of them are owned by out-of-state people, there, most of them, a lot of them, I can tell you through business, are actually here living at their house, at their beach house because they're in lockdown. And so now they've moved out to their house that's normally a rental and a lot of them are actually here already.
Yes, I get pictures of license plates on a regular basis from other states.
Yeah, and people don't realize that those are actually the owners that own the house that are there. Not, it's not a renter or anything. It is the actual owners.
Our community development group through the county is the one that is monitoring that. And they've been, they've been doing a good job of taking complaints and addressing them on a regular basis.
It's just really hard talking with the vacation rental companies that run these because of all these complaints that are going through. And it's, they're already short-staffed and no income and now they're having to deal with these other complaints that are, I guess frivolous, you could say, that they have no merit. And it's, it's just making it hard on everyone.
John? Do you have any concerns? You are, you need to unmute yourself before you speak.
I should probably have a mute button in real life. I don't have anything this evening except to say that I think a lot of us are taking it very seriously with the face masks and the distancing and the hand washing and everything else. And as you see on signs everywhere, stay inside, save some lives.
That's right. Thank you. Rebecca?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Brian?
Ethan Laurel. The PUD still hasn't cemented that corner. Yeah, it's great. It's a great time. They got plenty of things to, plenty of time to do it now. And then also, just if you can, I'm sure it's on theirs, but Laurel has become very badly damaged, basically between eighth and tenth. And huge potholes showing up. It's going to be hard on the school buses coming through there even.
It is. It's a pretty rough road.
And don't forget the intersection at Seventh and Laurel either.
Right.
I gave up on that a long time ago.
I know.
Jorge, is there anything that you would like to add?
Just, you know, a big concern I have, of course, is for all the local businesses. You know, I definitely have a lot of concern, you know, that if we go on much longer, it's going to be really difficult for a lot of them to make it. So I don't know that there's much that we can do about that unfortunately, but just express my concern about that and we definitely feel for them and we certainly want to open as soon as we can. That's it.
The other concern is unemployment. I know one lady who has, who made a mistake on her employment, unemployment application, her application for, and tried to call them and fix it. She has been making approximately 80 to 100 calls a day to the unemployment agency, state. And she has not once been able to talk to a person. So there are some serious difficulties with our state's unemployment grid, you know, because the only way she can fix that is she is told on the internet is that she has to make a phone call and there's nobody to answer her phone, the phone when she calls. So it's, it's a very difficult situation for many of the people in our community. Doug?
Suzanne?
Did you have a concern this evening?
Yeah, I do. I can't tell you this damn thing out. I need to get with Ukiah and figure out how to work this thing.
Well, Ukiah, I'm sure will be able to help you.
He's helped me twice and so far I'm not doing so well. I'm up there with John. I just want to take my old crap socks.
Ukiah?
If I, if I may, Doug, I have been, I have an axiom that's been rolling over and over, even over in my head lately. And the question is, how do you eat an elephant? The answer is bite by bite. So we'll get there, we'll get there a bite at a time, Doug.
Okay, Jorge?
All right, I move that we pay the bills.
Second to that motion.
The move is seconded to give authorization to pay the bills. Paul, will you take the vote of the council, please?
Okay, Councilor Sandusky?
Aye.
Councilor Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilor Rios?
Aye.
Sir Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilor Burris?
Aye.
Doug?
Oh, Doug, this is Jeff.
Doug? Okay. Okay, folks. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for being here for the executive session. And I think you've done really good work here tonight and I want to thank you. And with that, I adjourn the meeting.